Thank you.
You have to press the talk.
Thank you, Hartley. Good evening, welcome to the Selectmen's meeting for October 15, 2019. Could I get a roll call, please?
Wayne Miller, present.
Don Klein, present.
And Sulisio is present. I call the meeting to order, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to announce that the meeting is being taped recorded. Chairman's additions or deletions, I do have one addition.
Do you have it there?
Yes, it's on the table. What number should we call this?
I'm gonna say three.
Four eight.
Say, well, three three is appointments, right?
Right.
So say three three.
Three point three, and this is part-time library tech. I'm adding this because it just came in this afternoon and was therefore not anticipated prior to 48 hours when the agenda was put together. And if you hold on one second, just so that I can put it in the right place. So the first item is an executive session. As a change on the agenda, I'd also like to put, move six point two to immediately follow that. So we'll do two executive sessions early, okay? And then follow up with the other one at the very end. Does that make sense? Okay, pursuant to general law, chapter 38, section 21a4, executive session to discuss the deployment of security personnel or devices or strategies with respect to thereto. Could I have a motion, please?
I make a motion that we adjourn to executive session pursuant to general law, chapter 38, section 21a4, executive session to discuss the deployment of security personnel or devices or strategies with respect thereto.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor, roll call, please.
Wayne Miller, yes.
Don Klein, yes.
Sulisio, yes. And let's do the second one, too, please, six point two.
I also make a motion to adjourn and to executive session pursuant to general law, chapter 38, section 21a2, to conduct a strategy session in preparation for the negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct a collective bargaining session or contract negotiation with non-union personnel, reference, please chief.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor, roll call, please.
Wayne Miller, yes.
Don Klein, yes.
And Sulisio, yes.
We will be returning.
We will be returning.
We will be returning to open session. Those following these.
Okay, so anyone not associated with these would ask that you.
That's you, John.
Okay, we're all set, go ahead.
Okay, welcome back to the Selectmen's meeting. And we are finished with the executive sessions, we're going on to three point one, under appointments. Appoint Julie Kraus as a fractional counselor for recreation effective October 17, 2019, contingent upon the passing of a Corey check and medical exam. Do I have a motion?
Yeah, I make a motion that we appoint Julie Kraus as the fractional counselor for the recreation, effective October 17, 2019, contingent upon passing of a Corey check and medical exam.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, any questions? I have one, these positions don't require probationary periods.
Actually, they should, but my understanding is that these have previously worked first for last year and had already gone through one. But to the extent that they hadn't, then it would be appropriate to include that in the motion.
So could we include an probationary period, adequate probationary period or required probationary period? How's that?
Required, and a required probationary period.
Okay, on the amendment?
Yep, second.
Okay, ready to vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's as amended, unanimous. Three point two, appoint Caleb Williams as a fractional counselor for recreation effective October 17, 2019, contingent upon the passing of a Corey check and medical exam and probationary, required probationary period.
I make a motion that we appoint Caleb Williams as a fractional counselor for recreation effective October 17, 2019, contingent upon passing of a Corey check, medical exam, and the required.
Probationary.
Probationary period, thank you.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Three point three is the one that we added. You got it done?
Have now.
This is, Jim, how did we want this worded? To approve the appointment?
To appoint.
To appoint?
To appoint, correct.
Okay, because I thought, no.
Just the director, they appoint, so you appoint.
But the, all right, I gotcha, all right.
And this would include also Corey check and all that?
Yeah, it would be the same standard motion.
Right.
I make a motion that, excuse me, we appoint John C. Francis at the position of part-time library tech, contingent upon passing of a Corey check, medical exam, and the required probationary period.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four one, review, discuss, approve a road opening permit for Unitil on Emery Road as approved by the highway superintendent. Did we have, I didn't have that one in here.
Yeah.
I have it, we have it.
It's just a road opening.
Oh, there it is. All right. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve a road opening permit for Unitil on Emery Road as approved by the highway superintendent.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four two, review, discuss comment on a mandatory referral regarding special permit at 29 Main Street for the operation of veterinary hospital. Any comments?
Nope.
Nope. Do, we usually do a motion for this?
Just a motion to thank the Planning Board and the Zoning Board for the referral and no comments.
Okay, I make a motion that we thank the Planning Board and the Zoning Board of Appeals for the referral, and we have no comment.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Four three, review, discuss comment on a mandatory referral regarding special permit for an in-apartment, for an in-apartment at 15 Pheasant Ridge Road.
It's supposed to be in law.
In law. Same thing?
Yep.
Any questions, comments?
Nope.
I make a motion that we thank the Zoning Board of Appeals for the mandatory referral, and we have no comment.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four four, review, approve, sign a proclamation for the William E. May Endowment Award. We usually read this, I just, so do you want to read that, or?
If you want me to. Excuse me, whereas the Townsend Ecumenical Outreach exemplifies the qualities deserving of the William E. May Endowment Award, which recognize people or groups who do not make the news but make the difference in their communities, businesses, and volunteer endeavors, those who quietly, without fanfare or recognition, and usually behind the scenes use their time, talent, spirit, and enthusiasm to enrich the lives of others' end, whereas Townsend Ecumenical Outreach, founded in 1984, began helping families in need with food, clothing, and necessities, and whereas the Townsend Ecumenical Outreach, with the assistance of the local businesses in Townsend, were able to open their location on Baby Hill Road to support the most vulnerable of our residents during times of difficulties, and whereas the Townsend Ecumenical Outreach formed a 501(c) nonprofit to provide meals, clothing, furniture, and support to those in need, and whereas the Townsend Ecumenical Outreach, through its missions embodies the heart, soul, of the award given their genuine interest and commitment to the people of Town, of Townsend by working tirelessly to improve the lives of citizens of all ages throughout the community. Now, therefore, we, Sulisio, Wayne Miller, and Don Klein, Selectmen of the Town of Townsend, Menacecks County, and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the United States of America, do hereby proclaim October 19, 2019, as Townsend Ecumenical Outreach Day, and the Town of Townsend, and urge all citizens together with their families and friends to join us in appreciating their many years of commitment and service.
So do I have a motion to sign the proclamation?
I make a motion that we approve and sign the proclamation to the referencing the William E. May Endowment Award.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you have that?
Right.
Okay, I have a question, are either of you going?
When is it?
It's this Saturday.
I don't know that I'll be able to, this.
I am not, I.
Okay, usually one of the Selectmen goes, if neither one of you can go, then I will.
Okay.
Okay. I'm gonna hold on to this.
Yeah, thank you.
So just let Carolyn know so she doesn't think that it disappeared somewhere. So that took care of four, four. Four five, review, discuss policy for the use of the electronic messaging board, I didn't see anything in the packet.
There is, Madam Chair, I'm just looking for a little guidance.
It gets confusing.
Yeah, I went back and watched the tape, and we had a brief discussion about it, and so if I understand correctly, just something that says what types of things are allowed and for what purposes, and what events take priority over others.
That's kind of what I was thinking, I just want, my feeling was the highway guys are gonna just do whatever anybody asks them to do, because that's who they are. But, and I wouldn't care if it just formally came through your office first, and I don't know if it rises to the need of a policy even, but more of internal procedure that you could communicate to everyone.
Okay, just that someone is truly a gatekeeper over it.
Do you know what I mean, because you and Carolyn have a view to what's on the calendar, you know, what's coming up, and just to make sure that things don't get posted, for one thing, that's in front of something else that needs posting two days later.
Yep, I got you.
That kind of thing, so that's all I was concerned.
Do we have two message boards?
We do.
Yes.
And they're both up with the Highway Department?
Correct.
Yeah. But I just don't think that we should put that on, Jim, at the Highway Department. Do you know, it's something that should, I think, come through this office.
I'll put a document together, and at your next meeting, you can either consider it's a policy of yours, or if you prefer, kick it back, and I'll just have it as an internal procedure of.
I would be happy with an internal procedure, that's fine.
Just so people.
Okay, so if you want to just copy us on it.
Okay.
That's me, you guys okay with that?
No, I'm glad we talked about that, because
Okay.
People don't know what the whole prioritization is.
Okay. And I'm sure you guys can figure out the prioritization. Four six, review, discuss policy for contract procedures, and this is the first reading, correct?
First reading sentence would be broken out
Right.
as policy and procedure.
And has Town Council looked at this?
They have, yes.
Okay.
I didn't see anything.
I didn't see anything either.
Looks okay?
Looks okay.
Looks okay?
Consistent with the other ones.
All right, can I get a motion to accept?
I make a motion that we accept the first reading for the policy for contract procedures.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion? No changes? Aye. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Another policy. Four seven, declare surplus a residential freezer as requested by the Council on Aging with an estimated value of $200, Jim?
You should have an email in four seven in your packet, it's coming in from the Dining Volunteer Coordinator, Donna Benton, with a request that this freezer from the Council on Aging, which is residential, be declared surplus with a value not to exceed $200, and if you vote that it's surplus, they will put a notice on the board and accept bids on it.
Okay. Can I have a motion?
I make a motion we declare surplus, the residential freezer as requested by the Council on Aging with an estimated value of $200.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, the only thing I'd say is I was over there today, and it is not, it's not self-defrosting.
It's not frost-free.
Okay, so people should know that on that posting.
Gotcha.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Town Administrator, update and report.
Madam Chair, 511, you should have in your packets a copy of an email from John Denapoli, the Municipal and Community Service Manager for Unitil, and this is the first snapshot that we're getting on the streetlight conversion project that we did last year, when we converted all the streetlights to LED. So very quickly, you'll see, to date, our kilowatt hour consumption is down roughly 56% when compared to last year under the high pressure sodium streetlights, and that puts us at roughly 39% or close to $6,000 savings when compared to last year. So this is just meant to be a quick follow-up on that project, so kudos to the Energy Committee, Brett Carney and company for having shepherded this project.
What's the timeline to complete the project in its entirety?
It is completed.
It is all completed now.
We're up and going, so this is the first billing cycle we've seen with some data. Next, you'll see cable access project in your package, you'll have a copy of a request that you approve the purchase and installation of the next phase of our internal cable broadcasting studio, and this comes in off the COMBY's state contract list, and I could read through each of the identified components if you'd like, if not, it would be a motion to approve from the state bid list under vendor 917, in the amount of $14,845, the contract for Phase Two of our cable access program.
And what will this do for us that
This is.
we don't have now?
This is gonna be allowing us to do additional remote broadcasting, it's gonna allow us to do some programming where we can get to the point of being able to livestream our meetings, so people can watch from home. It's gonna replace the majority of the playback equipment that you see in that rack there that is the older version, so, just taking a look and see if there's a easier way for me to explain that.
So the question I get, well, could we get a motion on the floor, anyway?
Motion to.
Approve this.
Okay, I make a motion that we approve the quote for the additional Phase Two.
Right.
Phase Two of the cable access, in the amount of $14,845.
Second.
So the question that I have, and I might be totally off-base with this, is we're supposed to be at some point in time creating a cable corporation?
Correct.
And funds for that come from Comcast?
Which is also where these funds are coming from, so this would transfer to that nonprofit once it is.
Okay, so my question is, why are we doing this now? Why wouldn't we wait and do the corporation first and let the corporation take over doing this?
Part of it is because we sought and received a grant for some funding to do an overall IT and cable access upgrade, part of it was because we were still using equipment that was circa mid-'90s, and.
Meaning that thing?
What used to be here.
Okay.
So that was Phase One, was doing the cameras, the wall mount cameras, and setting up the recording station that's currently in the Great Hall that will be being moved over into the Selectmen's Office for security. This is just the recording section of that, so the actual recording and playback section.
Okay.
But all this transfers over to the Cable Access Corporation once it is completed.
What's our timeline for that, anyway?
I know Kate was working on that, and it took a second, I think a second seat to the extension.
Okay. Question? Question? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Next, in your packets, under 514, you should see an email from Brett Carney from the Energy Committee, and this is regarding the Library Senior Center HVA system. Finally, at the point where the Energy Committee discussed the issue at their meeting last week, and Brent writes, "Our number one recommendation is to have a third party, perhaps Unitil, perform an energy audit of the facility, there are likely changes that could be made to help improve the current situation, even if you do not take any action on items two and three, this piece is really important. Item number two, consider any type of funding options through the Energy Committee, we need information about the energy savings that we achieve by upgrading the systems and the payback period of those upgrades, the state grants have become very competitive, and we would need strong numbers in those two categories to have a chance at funding." And lastly, three, if the numbers look good, we want to apply for a competitive state grant for the project, we have two options, wait until next winter to apply, those grants are announced in June, and work could begin in the summer of '21, or we can tell the schools it's taken too long to complete the last project, and we abandon those funds and quickly turn around the application this winter, allowing us to make the upgrades next summer. We don't know for sure if the state would allow us to apply this year, if we abandon a portion of our last grant award, that would be something we need to clarify with Kelly at the state, the turnaround period for this is obviously very aggressive, so that needs to be considered, and we would need to hire John Hume to write our application, John, you'll remember us from MRPC. We'd also be leaving a large sum of money on the table from the last grant, which may happen anyway, which would be disappointing, but at this point, understandable. So, obviously, number one makes great sense, and as he said, regardless of two and three, we should be moving forward with number one.
So who would do that?
The Energy Committee would have John Denapoli in, and they would arrange to have Unitil come in as that third-party neutral. I think looking at three, do you have a thought on reaching out to the school district regarding the final project that's kind of languid out there?
Which one was it? The.
The.
The furnace or?
The boiler at Hawthorne, right? Yeah.
What happened, it didn't get done?
It hasn't been done to date, and it's now.
I think school started before.
Two years, I think it's a two-year ago grant award, so.
Yeah.
Except that was supposed to be done last summer.
Yeah, I was gonna say, what's the time limit on those grants, because I thought there was a period.
What Brent is saying is that the end of this year, we would be leaving a large amount of money on the table, which would be disappointing.
I would reach out to the school and get it done over one of these vacations, if the money's still truly there.
And if they believe that they can't, would you then support the attempt to reprogram it for HVAC project at the Library Senior Center?
Yeah, it's gonna depend on what the school says.
Right.
I don't understand what the issue is, and that.
I'd reach out to Brad first thing tomorrow on that.
That'd be great.
But can I convey to Brent then, that if the school isn't able to commit to getting it taken care of before the money will otherwise, that they should go ahead and.
Well, I mean, it's kind of dependent on number one, two.
But there's nothing stopping them from starting the process.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. The other thing that we have to talk about, and I'm not sure, I mean, this is from an energy perspective, but we know that we continue to have problems with the HVAC system, regardless of the energy efficiency.
Correct.
I mean, I was over there this morning, and our guy was over there up on a ladder trying to test to see what was happening.
I thought that we pushed that back in the Energy Commission to have that at their last meeting, the discussion.
In terms from an energy of.
Bringing in, they've had one consultant come in, but it's starting the bid process to.
See, I'm not sure if everybody is on the same page in terms of who's doing what.
Number one is purely energy savings.
Right.
Number two is talking about the upgrades, so when you're looking at what you just got there, information about the energy savings we've achieved by upgrading the system and the payback period of those upgrades, so they're talking about making certain that process that Wayne just referenced that has begun with an outside consultant is actually gonna be looked at in terms of the energy savings projected, so they can apply for the grants, because without a certain amount of savings.
Who's the consultant? Because the consultant that Mark had hired, it ended up to be, he came in and they came in and were tweaking the system.
Yeah, this was a separate one that, I know the company came in and did a, it wasn't an energy audit, but it was a.
Systems. A systems audit.
Systems audit that...
Did we ever get a report on that?
Yeah.
There's a report. I'd lie if I said I've read it. I know that there's a document.
I know.
And it was being held off until the Energy Committee was going to be ready to take the project.
Let's try to do that. My suggestion is doing that simultaneously.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, so it would be good to get that report and to understand that, not just from an energy perspective, but from a working perspective. Because if our maintenance people have to go over there every other day...
And manually override.
And manually do things, it kind of defeats the purpose of having a computerized system.
Gotcha. Okay.
That's just my opinion.
It's gonna happen.
Okay.
So I will get with Brent regarding...
Do number one.
Getting one going.
Check on number three and...
Two, we'll get that report and make certain that the energy piece is looked at in terms of the savings needed for the grant, but also that's the overall system upgrades.
We have that for the next meeting, please?
Absolutely, I made a note of it.
Thank you.
All right. And that's what I had for you, thank you.
Thank you. Five, two. Board of Selectmen's announcements, updates, and reports. I'm going to... Jim, do you wanna...
I would defer to the liaison on the first one, five point two point one.
Okay, this is a drink statement. Today, the Townsend Police Chief, Rick Bailey, submitted his letter of resignation and retirement to the Board of Selectmen. The chief will retire on December 31st, 2019. Between now and then, the Board of Selectmen will be conducting a search for the next chief. As a member of the community and as a committed law enforcement professional, Chief Bailey has offered and the board has accepted his assistance during the search and transition. The Board of Selectmen thanked the chief for his service and accomplishments during this time of service. Details on the selection process will be forthcoming. And personally, chief, thank you very much.
Thank you.
This was an easy decision, but...
Happy retirement.
The Madam Chair, if I could, the transition we're talking about is, just so everybody's on the same pages, between this announcement right now and the chief's ultimate transition into retirement, December 31st, there's a great deal of work that needs to be done in bringing whoever it's going to be as an interim, whether it'll just be, you know, the next body in the org chart or someone else, bringing them up to speed to know what the status of ongoing projects are. Things that are big and visionary down to the things that are small and mundane, like where the access code for, you know, the door locks is. So just so everybody's on the same page with that.
And it's my understanding that you also volunteered to help us on the search?
Yes.
Which we really appreciate. That's very much appreciated to have you on that. Okay?
That's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you, chief.
Thanks.
Thank you, chief.
Is there one more?
Yeah.
There is one more. Also announcing that our Director of Information Technology, our IT Director, Hassan Alat, has submitted his resignation and will be available to us until December 6th. So we have, you know, a month and a half or so of his time available to us. But he'll be transitioning out into another capacity and another location. So I just wanted to thank him for his time that he spent with us. He's been with us for a little over two and a half years. And this actually fits in from a policy perspective because I know some of the preliminary discussions I've had with members of the board lead me to believe that the interest is in looking towards an outside IT consultant instead of having a full-time IT staff director onsite. So this actually makes that a little easier, facilitates that process without having an incumbent in the position. So we might end up having a model that looks something like an outside vendor providing the support with an internal liaison of some sort. At least this is what Wayne and I have talked about with Wayne as the liaison for IT. So just want to publicly thank Hassan for his time and his effort with us over the last couple of years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Five, three. Clerk of the Board, announcements for events. Do we have any?
Nothing that I am aware of.
Okay, five, four. Board correspondence.
I have none.
I have none for this meeting. But that just reminds me, we were waiting for an update on the... We put this on our pending list, the unregistered motor vehicles.
Yes. I wish we'd thought of this before the chief just left. He did give me an update last week. The King property is compliant right now. There are a number of vehicles there still, but there's only one. There's only one that's unregistered and it is compliant with the bylaw.
Excellent, okay. If you could check into the other ones?
Absolutely.
And there was one piece of correspondence that I received regarding the flags. And I asked you to forward that to...
It was forwarded off to the American Flag Committee as well as to the Veterans Service Officer. And I've not heard back.
Okay, maybe you could follow up on that, please? That was the only other one that was outstanding. Five, five. Review and approve the meeting minutes for August 20th, 2019. Do I have a motion?
Were you here for that one?
Yeah, I wasn't here for the meeting.
Sure, I'll do it then. I move the approve the meeting minutes from August 20th, 2019.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry, Donna, I didn't see her. I'm not that one.
Review and sign payroll and bills payable warrants.
I make a motion that we sign payroll and bills payable warrant out of session.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We have an executive session. I just want to jump down to other pending business items. We have a list, charter review status. They had a meeting the other night.
Yes, I attended.
And they have another meeting scheduled tentatively for this Thursday as well to kind of button up based on comments that they received. Cable contract, can we get Kate for the next meeting?
Absolutely. I know that she was gonna be available.
And Unitil?
When is our next meeting?
The fourth, something like that, the first Tuesday of the month. We have a work session in between.
Okay, that's the 30th, correct?
That is correct.
Just want to make sure I wasn't missing one.
Yes, the 30th, and so the next is the 5th.
Which is Election Day. So that puts this room out of...
We'll go to library again?
Last time we did the library.
So can we post to the library, please?
Check to the library.
That's cozier for that anyway. So cable contract, Kate, next meeting, please?
Yep.
Call center update, can we get an update next meeting?
I can tell you that just today I received a quarterly report from Fire Chief, and on this point he said that we're still waiting on the feasibility study from MRPC and it's due any moment.
Okay, all right. Fall town meeting date, we know that's being held, we'll keep this on the list. Status on earmark for town common sidewalk. I know that note went out, I remember seeing something.
Right, I can check in. I know Roger was communicating with them because it was a Simgeon Parks request, so I can confirm with Roger.
On the minutes we just approved, you had recommended an audit committee be formed. We met on that, right?
You've got the policy in place, we've just not posted it yet, so I guess moving forward and posting.
Yeah. And Unitil spraying, I think is being taken care of by conservation at this point by our agent.
Yeah, you and I spoke with David this morning on that, so he's bird-dogging that for you.
Okay, if he could get back to us as to the resolution, it would be great. If he could get back to the board or send you an update. I haven't seen executive session minutes come through, and I don't want us to get to the point that we've got tons of them.
Right, I've got a number that I've got to do yet, a pretty brief one, so I'll...
I just want, just put a tickler in your file, please? Because I just don't want to get to the situation where we have so many of them, it becomes cumbersome to handle them, please, okay? And anybody else have anything that was on their tickler list? Okay. So back to six, one. Executive session pursuant to general law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Why does it say non-union? It says all union groups.
Let me see, collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations. So collective bargaining sessions would be the part that we're using.
Yeah, so that is incorrectly typed there. It's union personnel.
No, it may be correctly typed, but the provision that says "or to conduct collective bargaining sessions", we're actually doing strategy on collective bargaining sessions.
Okay.
But I will check on that.
You will check on what?
To make certain that that is worded correctly, but we're covered under collective bargaining sessions.
Okay, all right. So can I have a motion?
Okay, do you want me to leave that out or read the whole thing?
The whole thing exists, yeah. That's what was publicly noticed.
Okay, I make a motion that we adjourn to executive session pursuant to general law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Reference all union groups.
Second.
Moved and seconded. I don't like the way that's worded. Can you check it, please?
Yeah, I'm gonna pull it up now. Number two is to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. And three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or if litigation, or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating or bargaining position of the chair, so declares. So... I would say that the safer of the two would have been three, you're correct. But I think that we're covered under two in that this is collective bargaining sessions that we're actually recounting.
And it's clear that it's all union groups.
Right, and you have members of the board assigned as liaisons that are reporting back out to the full board.
Okay, all right. All those in favor? Roll call, please?
We know, yes.
Don Klein, yes.
Sullisio, yes, and the intention is not to come back into open session?
Correct, correct.
So we will be taking, what, five minutes?
Yep.
Five minutes, and then we'll be back to do the executive session.
Did you roll call it?
Yeah. Sullisio, yes?